I would like to call this meeting of the Festus City Council to order. Roll call, please.
Councilman Boyer.
Here.
Councilman Collier, absent. Councilman Vins.
Here.
Councilman Cook.
Here.
Councilwoman Templeton.
Here.
Councilman Weiner.
Here.
Councilman Tenon.
Here.
Councilman Dennis.
Here.
We do have a quorum. Pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, undegowed, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Tonight's bills total seven hundred twenty-two thousand eight hundred eighty-five dollars and ninety-eight cents.
So moved.
Motion's been made and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilman Cook.
Yes.
Councilwoman Templeton.
Yes.
Councilman Weiner.
Yes.
Councilman Tenon.
Yes.
Councilman Dennis.
Yes.
Councilman Boyer.
Yes.
Councilman Collier. Councilman Vins.
Yes.
Motion passes. Consent agenda is approved. Remarks of visitors. We have none for tonight. Bids, Police Department.
Mayor and Council, tonight in front of you, you have a towing contract proposal. We went out for bids. We had, we started out years ago with one sole source towing. As more towing companies came in, they started adding to a contract or just a towing list. Several months back, we were approached by the fourth tow company and requesting to join the tow list and a couple of the other tow companies were like, this is, we need to try to scale this back. How many are we going to allow to join? So at that point in time, we decided to go out and contract for three years with one towing company overall to do all the towing for the city. We sent out a proposal. We did receive four bids back on the proposal. All four of them were qualified. After going through, you have a spreadsheet in front of you going through all the prices and everything. The overall best pricing that came out of that looks like it was minor towing. They are based out of their home bases out of Fenton, Missouri. They do have storage lots down here that fit within the criteria, both inside, outside. They do have surveillance on them. They do have the capabilities of towing everything that our contract consists of. So we are recommending that minor towing be the sole source provider through a contract for the city of Festus.
Any discussion?
Yes, sir. Uh, Chief, so it's a three-year contract. What happens if the contract had, they struggled to fulfill it or we have issues why we're on the scene? What does the contract state?
That states that it is, it is a revocable contract that we can go come back and revisit this and that we're not locked into it for three years if they fail to provide the services that they say they're going to provide.
Is that determined by you and your command staff?
Yes. And that is something, you know, is if there's a series of no-shows or prolonged periods of time for a tow that is all taken into account and that all will count against them through the, so the contract if they fail to uphold those.
Chief, when we talked before, we talked about local entities that were involved in in towing and so on and and minors also. And can you give us a little background on minors, how they're how they're able to compete and come down here and do the job that we think that they're going to be able to?
They've, they've opened up. They approached us, like I said, last May, June, at that point in time, about joining the tow list because they were expanding their operations down to here. They have all the qualifications here. They have the lots here that they need. They have full-time drivers in this area. They have a full-time dispatching center that operates 24 hours a day at their home base in St. Louis or in Fenton, which is where they will dispatch out of, but the drivers are located down here locally with trucks and everything on hand. They have the trucks on scene that they need. They also have, if anything is a major wreck or anything else, they also have all their resources up right by gravelly bluffs that they can be down here in short notice for a major accident, major traffic scene, something like that.
And their numbers came in below the other
Yes.
parties that were involved?
On most things, they were lower or lowest. The second one was Crosby Towing, Crosby Fudge Towing. They were comparable on several, but the main focus of what we were looking for minors was the cheapest on all of those.
Since it is a three-year, and I realize that if they don't fulfill the contract, but is there also like annual reporting that they still have all of the licenses, the insurance and everything?
Yes, they, they have, they have all agreed to open it up to where we can come down. They're inspected really by the state as far as all of their trucks and everything else. But they, uh, they all did agree through this proposal that we can come in at any time, look through the books, look through, you know, their tow, to make sure they're abiding by everything that is stated in the contract.
I have, I have several questions. I, I tried to hold you day, Doug, and you were out, but I couldn't find one other PD in our area that does this. And we have no history with this company. I'm not saying they're good or bad. But wouldn't it be better to share the wealth and everybody get a piece of it? What happens if they don't have enough equipment to take it and they got a lot of equipment? Is anybody else going to be working, wanting to work with us since we went down to one and it seems a lot of this appears to be convenience? A one-call-one-shop deal. You know, that's, that's, that's my concern. All these other people have been with us. We know what they can do and I, I can't say minors is good or bad. They seem to be a very good operation and I think all they wanted was on the tow list. Don't we control that or why would one more be such?
So a little, so a little bit of history on it. We always had one sole contract forever. It's back several years back, another towing company opened up and they wanted to be part of the tow contract. So we opened it up to a tow list and we had two. Well, then McCain's came around and they wanted to be a part of the tow contract. They fit within the specifications. And then one of the, the, one of the other towing companies like, well, we don't need three. Well, we have three. So then whenever miners came in and wanted to go four, we were contacted by a couple of different ones that were saying, well, I think we, I would rather go out for a bid and have a chance to get it all than split it all four ways. So we went off of kind of those and it's a lot harder for our dispatchers to remember which one to call next and we got complaints. Well, I had to tow that, I had to tow things off Main Street last year whenever the Christmas parade came around, even though we were calling different ones each year. So just for sheer easiest serves us, easiest for the dispatch, easier for the city, easier for the PD, we decided to go out to bid for one contract.
For convenience. So so if, if I'm in an accident, who picks, who picks who I can call to tow my car?
If you're in an accident, you can have somebody that you choose tow your car as long as they can be there within 15 minutes to pick your car up. If not, we will go off of this contract to tow the vehicle.
Okay.
That's the way it's always been.
Okay. Have we run this by our legal people? And since nobody else does it this way that I could find today?
There, there's nobody in this area, but there's agencies all over that have a sole contract.
Okay. Okay.
Anything to add, Brian, or?
I haven't examined the, I haven't been asked to examine the ordinances on this topic yet. I mean, I agree with the chief that there are some agencies that just use use one entity. If this is something that the council wants me to look at, and I'll just note that I think tonight is just to select the provider and that we'll ultimately need to approve an actual contract. I didn't see an actual contract in the packet tonight.
Yeah, that, I was, I wasn't working with Greg. I don't know what the actual contract is going to entail. I just, he asked me to put it, the staff report together for tonight.
Okay. So should we wait until it's all together, then vote on it? I would feel more comfortable.
I'd like
We can't put a contract together, sir, until we know who we're putting a contract together with.
Yes, we as Chief just stated, we won't be able to do a contract until we have somebody to do a contract with and be quite honest.
Yeah, but I'm like Kevin and some other ones. We've been fine with local for such a long time and I, I don't know miners either. I know they probably good, but is it that much difference all the years we've been doing business local? I mean, whether it's Pippen's or McCain's or, I mean, to go out of, out of town, I know they're going to be outside our city limits, but that's the biggest worry I have is how fast are they going to be able to reply whenever they could be?
They'll be bound to be there in a certain amount of time. They're going to have drivers and they have drivers in this area. They've had drivers in this area for the last nine months. If they can't, if they start having issues, we have an out on the, well, we'll have an out on the contract to eliminate them then and go to the next most qualified at that point in time.
So Doug, is this like a similar contract that we've had in the past with another company though?
We, we've never been under contract with any one company. Whenever I started here 28 years ago, it was Pippin's Towing did all the, all the towing for the city. They were the only one that was really capable of doing all the towing that we had. After several years, Rick Crosby retired from the city. He bought several tow trucks. He wanted to open up his towing company. He wanted to be a part of that tow contract. Well, at that point in time, rather than contracting with one, we developed a tow list. So then he joined the tow list and we started the two, two truck rotation or two company rotation. Few years after that, McCain's in business up in Peavly, wanted to be a part of it. So at that point in time, we extended it to three. Then at the behest of Crosby at the time, who didn't want a third one added whenever he was added as a second one. So then whenever we had the fourth one approach us, I was contracted by a couple of different ones who were thinking it may be better just to go out because they would rather have all of the money than a quarter of the money. And that's what prompted us into this direction in the first place.
So, but I, I basically, I don't, I don't see any difference between this and having three asphalt companies bid a job and, you know, and our local company loses to somebody else out of town.
That's, that's, that's exactly the same. Although in this situation, McCain or miners is, has an office just down on 67 right by Buffs. They have outside storage right there, which is secured and fits within the guidelines. They have inside storage down off of 61 was fit, was fit, which fits into the guidelines. So they're a local tow company now also, even though their base is out of Fenton.
So, so basically then the only discrepancy we have is we don't have a contract to view to we can, we could approve the company based on the approval of the contract later day, right?
Basically, what I'm seeking tonight is approval of the company so we can enter into a contract with them. They have a contract drawn up.
That's my understanding of how we're going to proceed is we select the company tonight and then a contract to be prepared a later day.
Good with that.
Is there any other discussion?
Mayor, I'm sorry. Hey, Brian, question for you. If, if we select a company and go the contractor and work on one, does that give council some input on the contract? Cause what if hypothetical, we get a rash of complaints on just service, tow yard fees? I mean, I, I don't know if we're going to see none of that. What, what authority do we have to cancel it then if we choose to because of potential resident clients situations?
I'll have to discuss with Greg when he's back in town, but typically it's going to have to come back for the council to approve the contract. And yes, theoretically, pass a contract by a resolution or an ordinance, then you can later pass an ordinance or contracts, ordinance or resolution repealing it if it, if it came to that. But typically these have clauses in there where the city can terminate in X number of days with or without cost.
Yes, there's, I, there was a spreadsheet included along with all of their as far as what they bid on all the different things.
Mike, would you turn your?
Yeah, I apologize. When I forwarded this, it must've got tied up because I forwarded when I got sent and yeah, I just, I missed that part. It's not on there, but that's my fault. Technology.
Hey, hey Doug, would, would it be their responsibility in the contract if they couldn't do it to have a backup?
Basically, they're, I mean, they're responsible for being there to tow. If they don't show up at that point in time, we would call a different company. If they showed, didn't show up in a set amount of time, we would call a different company to come in outside of that to tow it.
Gotcha. Okay.
And that would be a strike against them in the overall scheme of how, you know, the contract works.
Okay. So let it all be in the contract then? I got you.
Is there any other discussion?
One last thing, chief. On, on the people getting towed, how would the rates apply to them as far as these different companies would go?
Well, that, that's what that kind of that rate sheet is. The, the 70, the, the first one, the towing, that is what they will charge if we call them to come out. That is what the resident will be charged to have their car. Say we, say we arrest somebody, whatever. There's no way they have, nobody to come get their car. They're going to jail. That is what they will tow the car to their lot for. And then the impound fee is what they will charge per day while that car sits there until they go down to get that car out of impound.
So as far as the pricing goes, the tow fee and the storage fee were lowest with this, with miners towing?
The tow fee was a $3 more, but the daily storage fee was $25 less than the next cheapest. So.
Very good.
Is there any other discussion?
We need to make a decision on this tonight or can we wait till Greg gets back for further?
We can make a decision on, on this tonight. When Greg gets back, we'll work out the contract. Then the contract gets worked out for the company. And then we'll get the contract signed. We can make a decision tonight. I'll entertain a motion to approve miners towing to be our single tow company. Motion's been made.
I'll second the motion.
And seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilman Tenon.
Yes.
Councilman Dennis.
No.
Councilman Boyer.
No.
Councilman Vins.
No.
Councilman Cook.
I'm a no.
Councilwoman Templeton.
No.
Councilman Weiner.
Yes.
The motion fails.
Four to
Two to five.
Five to two.
We'll have to figure it out, Doug.
Thank you.
Okay, on the ordinances and resolutions. Tonight we have bill number forty-seven sixty-seven on the agenda. Would the clerk please read the bill for the first time?
Bill number forty-seven sixty-seven, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Festus, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to enter into and execute an agreement with Jefferson County Public Sewer District, incorporating said agreement as a part of this ordinance and establishing an effective date.
Can I have a staff report?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, this contract would be with the Jefferson County Public Sewer District to provide for water shut-off, shut-off of water service in the event of non-payment for sewer bills now that they'll be handling sewer service for the city. It just provide for a $100 fee to be paid by the sewer district per, per request to the city. And that is the same as the agreement that we entered into, and I believe November with Rock Creek Sewer District as well.
Is there any discussion?
So if you don't pay your sewer bill, we're going to shut your water off. Wouldn't that be like the same thing? If you don't pay your car insurance, we're gonna shut something else off? So first I've heard this.
It's it's similar to, yeah, I mean, essentially if you don't, if you don't pay your sewer bill, then they have the ability to after, after notice to the homeowner in an ample period of time, they have, they have the ability to request that the city shut off water service. As I mentioned, we did a similar agreement with Rock Creek Sewer District, which has a, I think a small number that the homes in the city are on their service. It's the same basic concept as that.
So is there going to, I know, I know personally I haven't received my sewer bill, but I've received my water bill and the sewer is known, I believe. I just got it, but is there going to be a little bit of grace period until we kind of roll out the bumps on this? Because apparently people have already complained about this and this is, you know, before I even got it to look at. So that's my concern that the transition is smooth. I didn't know it was going to have anything to do with your water, your sewer. I thought we're separate entities again, but you know, once again, it's, it's a lot in front of us for, to digest over a weekend.
Sure. No, I understand. And I, I know that they don't do it right away. It's, there is a considerable period of time. I believe it's at least 30 days after payment is due, request would be made to terminate service.
I kind of agree with Kevin about a grace period, at least while we're moving everybody over and transitioning. I mean, as it is now, if you don't pay your bill, then your services are shut off, but just given some of the concerns we've had about how to pay the bill, where to pay the bill, all that kind of stuff. Is this something we can give like a deferral for X amount of months until it would be perceived that people have figured out, yeah, this is how it works?
Well, I believe in our water bill, we, we got some explanation of who we would have paid our sewer bill to.
That I, that I understand, but I think it's a big change for some people. And not everybody is as tech savvy as others. And I think there's, there's going to be a learning curve, whether we want to admit that or not. And I would, if we can push the, hey, we're not going to come shut your water off until you know, we've made every attempt to hopefully get you to comply. If that, if they don't comply by that point, then yeah, I mean, it's, if you don't pay for the service, you don't get the service.
What if we shot for like a June 1st effective date on this? Would that cause a problem? That way everybody has a little more time to iron out the, because if I'm not mistaken, I think the girls over at Public Works, Mark or somebody, they're like pretty hammered on getting the water rates over to the sewer companies. What I'm understanding, somebody please help me out. I mean, that's a pretty big load right now. I'm, I'm under the impression.
We're working through it, but it's definitely, it's obviously a change.
Yeah. So what if we did like a June 1st effective date, Brian?
Well, what I might suggest, I, I mean, that's certainly an option for the council to consider. What I might suggest is if you have some concerns about this, I can reach out to the sewer district to get a little bit more detail on what their policies are. I mean, I know they're, they're not eager to take anybody's, to shut down anybody's service, particularly at the beginning of this relationship when we still have some, you know, the inevitable hiccups in the transition that come along. I think our view is this is more a matter of housekeeping. We need to just have this in place for when the requests have to be made. I don't think anything's imminent. And I think they're going to be making every effort to to work with people and not do it unless they absolutely have to. But I can get a little bit more detail from the sewer district about what those policies are. And if that gives you a greater level of comfort, we can have that before you, before you guys take a vote on this.
Yeah. I mean, even if it's May 1st, I mean, we're still getting, I'm still getting complaints because people thinking they had to pay their $100. It's like, no, flip the letter over.
What if we did this? What if we made amended the motion to effective May 1st? Passed it. That way Brian has time to work with them, but it's already set and done. Is that doable, Brian?
It's certainly doable. Yeah. That's, if that's what you want to do. I mean, I don't think that they're looking, I mean, it's, it's the end of March now. I, it's highly unlikely they're going to be shutting anybody off before May 1st.
Can I say something? Could I say something?
Go ahead.
Looking over the agreement, they're paying a hundred dollars per disconnect, disconnect for each one that they disconnect. So I don't think it's like you're going to get a bunch of disconnects right away. It's going to be, because I don't know how much the sewer bill is, but it's probably going to be way less than a hundred bucks. So it might be two months worth before they actually do disconnects or request them to be disconnected.
A hundred dollars is for new residents. We're, if you're established, you're not paying the hundred dollars. So that's, that's been waived.
No, I believe it says district.
Right. But isn't that, I think that's referred to the deposit though.
District shall pay to the city the sum of $100 per disconnect request made by the district. To city pursuant to this agreement, such $100 fee shall be payable.
Greg about it. That's why new customers put a hundred dollars up. That's the new deposit is what he told me.
I guess we need clarification on that.
Well, he publicly, he publicly posted on our, on our website that if you were already established, so you didn't pay that. So and I've had two, I've had two people in my ward that just got their water shut off. So I wonder how that's going to affect their sewer. So, and you know, we're getting a ton of questions, but the sewer commission has done more than wonderful work to work with.
The district is saying they're going to pay the city $100 to go and turn off the water. It's not saying they're charging the, the homeowner. They're paying the city to go out and turn off the water.
Right. Like a work fee.
Separate from, as I interpreted, it is separate from a hundred dollar deposit. It's an operation of the contract.
Right. It's a work to do.
I understand that, but they're not going to want to, I, I think Michelle is correct. They're not going to want to make it happen instantaneously. Obviously there's a couple of pieces that we need to know, but I think your recommendation no sooner than May 1st that they're going to come and be able to do that. June 1st.
But it may, may hopefully into June or something. Get people timed that.
I mean, another way to do this too.
Well, is there any, go ahead, Brian?
I was just going to say if, if what we could do is postpone second reading until the next meeting and I can try to have a little bit more detail about exactly what the process they're going to go through. If that gives you a greater comfort level and that way we can just pass the ordinance, have it be in effect right away. If you're satisfied and if you're not satisfied, I can take that back to the sewer district and discuss what needs to be changed.
Okay, let's go that route. Is there any councilman who would like this bill carried over to the next meeting?
So moved.
Second.
There we go. Bill forty-seven sixty-seven will be carried over for a second reading to our first meeting in April. What's that?
Eight, maybe nine.
Yeah. So either the eighth or the ninth. We're going to work on that tonight too. Okay. The next ordinance that we have is bill forty-seven sixty-eight. Would the clerk please read the bill for the first time?
Bill number forty-seven sixty-eight, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Festus, Missouri, amending the zoning map of said city as established by the planning ordinances of the City of Festus, Missouri and establishing an effective date.
Could I have a staff report, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. As we had the public hearing earlier, this is for 509 Brothers. They're seeking to rezone that from R2 to B2. You heard the proposed use from the proprietor. This, this was sent through PMZ last Thursday. They unanimously recommended for approval. Their proposed use does fit in unconditionally in a B2.
Is there any discussion?
So Mark, that's pretty well got us covered. If anybody says, you know what they like to say, the spot zoning, Brian, Mark, because it's already that, we're just making it what everybody else is.
That's correct. The two other properties on Brothers are, were both rezoned, I believe in 2010 and 2013 respectively. So does a join to B2. Oh, the entire side. Yep, the entire block now.
Is there any other discussion? Is there any council member that would like this bill carried over to the next meeting? Hearing none, do I have a motion to suspend the rules and read bill forty-seven sixty-eight for the second time?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Hearing none, motion carries. Madam Clerk, would you please read bill forty-seven sixty-eight for the second time?
Bill number forty-seven sixty-eight, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Festus, Missouri, amending the zoning map of said city as established by the planning ordinances of the City of Festus, Missouri and establishing an effective date.
Roll call, please.
Sorry. Councilman Weiner.
Yes.
Councilman Tenon. Councilman Dennis.
Yes.
Councilman Boyer.
Yes.
Councilman Vins.
Yes.
Councilman Cook.
Yes.
Councilwoman Templeton.
Yes.
Bill forty-seven sixty-eight has passed.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, thank you, Mayor and Council.
New business. Tonight's new business is to, we would like to consider to move the council meeting from April eighth, twenty twenty-four to April ninth, twenty twenty-four, which is a Tuesday because of the eclipse. And along with that, um, would like to to tie in with this. Would like to give all non-essential employees the afternoon off so they could go see the eclipse and all um, essential personnel would be given four hours of comp time. Being fair to everybody. I will entertain a motion to, um, move the city council meeting to April ninth and give non-essentials the afternoon off and essential employees four hours of comp time.
Mr. Mayor, make that motion, um, totally make it, uh, our employees, you know, the private sector make a whole lot more, public sector, you make, you sacrifice. Um, I think it'd be a good thing for the employees, I really do. Like, we've had some hard times here, so I make the motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. Hearing none, motion carries. Council meeting has been moved to the ninth. Do we have any old business tonight?
No.
No.
I have something, uh, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
We had discussed in great length and was supposed to get an answer back on a guardrail over on Hillsboro, uh, where the drop-off is, and I'm not sure what happened to all that. It just kind of got lost. So, uh, maybe we can stimulate that and get that done. I think we're down to picking what kind of guardrail, but it, I guess with the change of, uh, jobs, or maybe Shane, maybe Shane can add something to this. Uh, but I think that's something we need to get done.
I bring this up because you think you want Michael Christopher, who's gonna be our Public Works Director, probably weigh in on this because he's got extensive knowledge on what's called road traffic hazards that's placed with guardrails, and, uh, he actually was involved in a settlement on guardrails. I think he's wanting to weigh in on this because he kind of got in my ear about it, and I didn't really know what direction to go in, but.
Yeah, yeah. Moved on.
He starts April first. We can, uh, get him going on that.
That's an answer. Thank you.
Okay. Since we have no old business. Councilman Boyer.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, uh, since, uh, Michael Christopher is not here yet, I'll direct this towards, uh, Shane. Um, Mayor's crews will be coming up June first, and, uh, I know this company can only work so fast, but, uh, if you guys, you guys pretty much stay in contact with them. What's going on? Have we got problems with the road cuts and stuff?
Yeah, I talked to, uh, Mr. Kimes today, actually, and he's hoping to, as long as that water main passes the PSI test, he's gonna start filling in all those cuts with concrete this week.
Okay. That's a good thing. Um, whether it gets finished or not, if it's not finished, it'd be good if, uh, prior to this event, because there are gonna be a lot of people downtown, you know how that is, that everything would maybe be hosed down and then a, a sweeper come through and, you know, do a little fun finale on it. Get things taken care of, so. Okay, yeah, appreciate you guys looking into that. Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, Councilman Weiner.
Yeah, with, with this West Main, um, with this torn ups it is, I guess in a couple of weeks, we're probably gonna start getting back to having some concrete work done up here and working from, from east to west on it.
Really slow it down. Lot of big tracks had to be done, and that's a pretty big job in a very busy area, so.
Okay, very good.
He's getting the button up. So water line actually pretty much got completed today. Again, as long as it passes the pressure test, then I'll have to fill it up with water, let it sit for a couple of days, we'll test the water. As long as it comes back good, we'll start doing taps.
Okay.
It should start rolling pretty good.
I know the residents are looking forward to having their streets, uh, manageable in, in this area. Um, so also, um, I'm happy to see that Edgewood project, uh, proceeding is, is, uh, as fast as it can. Um, yeah, I mean, that, that thing is, I know it feels probably like, uh, molasses drying or whatever, whatever the old expression is, but it is, um, it is going, we're going as fast as we can to get that project done, and hopefully within, um, soon, those residents will be having that problem solved over there. Um, and then finally, Barb, thank you, um, good job on Carrie's retirement. You did a, did a good job over there. There are a lot of people, um, a lot of goodies and, um, dignitaries and all that stuff. It was a, a nice special evening for her, or afternoon for her. She deserved it, and, uh, it couldn't have been done without your work, so thank you.
Thank you. But Josh and Shane and Zach and Dell, they were big helps, and I couldn't have done any of it without them.
Cool.
I asked, none of them ever tell me that.
Okay. Thank, thank you. Yeah, thank you, thank you guys also. It was a good afternoon. Thank you.
Councilman Cook.
Yes, sir, thank you. Hey, Shane, on the West Main project, because, uh, Councilman Boyer said it, um, seemed like complaints were up. Are, are we behind on that? I mean,
Slow it down.
How, how far?
He's got a, he had a hundred and fifty days to complete the project, and that was December, sometime in December when it started. Hundred and fifty days to complete the project, but since we added this water line, he's getting powered along. The city's gonna give him to, to complete the water before he gets started back on the sidewalks and stuff again.
Okay.
It's unfortunate that, uh, it's in such a busy area, uh, but he, he's going as fast as he can, and he, he's getting complaints, too.
Oh, I know he is, a- and this is actually gonna be defense, because I'm actually disappointed, and we're making, we're, we're doing things to make the city better, and we so we got some inconvenience for a while.
Yeah.
The end picture is gonna be, I mean, we want clean water, we want new mains, but then we're gonna gripe and we don't get them, and they're not done correctly. We can't win. So it gets old, a- and it actually, I'm getting tired of it because I can't wait till this fifty-five project done. I could hear everybody done for three years. It's unbelievable the stuff we hear when we're trying to make progress. So let me ask you this question. And food for thought. Should we, do we post, I mean, do we need to post these timelines? Do we need to do a better job marketing what we're doing, getting it out there so people understand? A, what we're doing, B, what the timeline is, what the scope of work is, and if we are delayed, maybe come up with a way? And Barb, have we done on the website? I, I know the website turned out to be a constant complaint, and I'm not winning that battle, because I like to see all comments off. I would. A lot of cities do it, but I'm not gonna win that. But what can we do different? Help me reinvent the wheel here, because i- it seems like there's just days, guys, I, I don't even want to come in here anymore, because we can't win.
I have the impression that letters were sent out to all the homeowners, all West Main, I mean, the whole city, I mean, please, please. No, you're right. Uh, yeah, the only other way to get out to the whole city would be social media, easiest way, but you know how that goes.
I do. I just feel bad for our employees, because, I mean, eh, what's our starting wage for a public works employee? Seventeen dollars an hour? You can go right down the street McBride and make twenty-three fifty an hour. And, and so it's just mind-boggling. Here, I go out o- on a water main break on a Sunday night in December, and them guys are freezing, and they're in a hole in water. I bring them water, and they're thanking me, and here they're making seventeen bucks an hour. So I appreciate the council passing the four hours. I mean, I know it's small, and sometimes we'll, we'll catch it, but I don't know, I, I just think the employees, I hope they feel, and, uh, I, I believe the mayor does a great job. I, I believe the administration is a great job, but I just think sometimes you guys get the brunt when we gripe and we hear it on social media, and, uh, yeah, I just, I don't think it, it fits the city's true description. And eh, social media can be mind-boggling, and I just don't think that represents us, and I'm very happy what we're trying to do. I'm very proud what we try to accomplish. There's not one of us on this council that's running for state rep or has pu- future political ambitions. I got three council members who are all veterans. I got ones that retired military marine. I just can't believe what people think and what they do. And so, yeah, I'm soapboxing tonight, because I got my ear bent to the gas station. So here's my answer. Don't drive it. Find a different way. I don't care. Because when it's all said and done, you better not be on that road, because I will tell you right now, I will scream and yell at you. I promise you. It is, a- and it just gets old, so I want to say thanks to the employees. I want to say thanks for the council. We do our best. Sometimes we make bad decisions. I voted for the concrete planners. I got a picture of that in my office, so I never forget. I never forget that. That keeps me humble. I voted for that. So it keeps me humble, and Mr. Mayor, that's my soapbox. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilman Dennis.
Yeah, to, Mike's right, uh, you know, I, I don't even want to go to the store anymore. Uh, but, you know, we are trying our best, and, uh, you know, we're working hard, trying to get it done. Thanks, Shane, for filling in. I know there's a lot of stuff that you've been doing that maybe necessarily ain't your job, but you're a team player. You keep playing, you keep things going, so I appreciate that. I think all of our departments do a good job. They work hard. You know, we're proud of them, and we give them everything we can, and, uh, I hope they know that. Uh, I did see one of our new police cars out, the new Durango's today. They're really sharp. Uh, really looks good. Uh, so good job to that. I did see our fire truck over behind the Public Works garage. Is that on purple, uh, purple wave? Or is it just sitting over there for work?
No, we, uh, the inside duals, uh, were bad on the truck. It was shaking so bad driving down the road, so.
Oh, no.
We had to, we had to replace the rear tires on that truck.
Oh, I got.
Still trying to get rid of the, um, the spare truck that's in the, um, Public Works, and we'll get it out of your way soon.
Right, right. Yeah, and I think, uh, I know you guys have been real busy with all these fires. You guys, uh, have done a good job. All our departments do a good job, so, uh, police department had a pedestrian struck over on Horon the other night, and I've heard nothing but great things. How it was handled, it was a young person, and, uh, everybody did a great job. Thank you for that, uh. You know, I've seen plenty of patrols, uh, around town, so, uh, nothing but good things to say tonight. That's all I have, sir.
All right, thank you, Councilman Tenon.
The, uh, road conditions, you know, I drove down Main Street today, and um, since that's what I do for a living, it's, it is what it is, you know? And, uh, pretty soon, uh, the sidewalks will be done, the asphalt will be done, and everybody will focus on a new project to whine and cry about. Um, but, you know, you can't have progress wi- without some, uh, construction debris and everything that goes with it. But it, it is what it is, so, you know, you guys did a good job, and, and I know Chuck Kimes pretty well, and I know he's not gonna be screwing around just for the heck of it, so. Uh, that's all I got to say. Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you. Councilman Vins.
Pretty much did it. Everybody said it, so. That's all I got, sir.
All right, thank you, Councilwoman Templeton.
I'll just add to the whole, uh, what everybody else has said by saying, if progress was easy, we would all be in flying vehicles like we thought we would in nineteen fifty, so that really doesn't happen. See, exactly. But I will say this, I have actually been in contact with a couple of people that live in the area who don't mind what's going on on Main Street because they know it's going to be so much better when it's done. And I think the comment that I liked best was, one of them said, it's not like you can get to the water mains, you know, just with a magic wand. You've got to tear up the streets to get to what you need, so there we are. So people do realize it, but unfortunately, we all know in this room, people who have something negative to say want to share it with everybody. And those who have something positive to say, they aren't usually those same people, so it's progress. We can't complain.
That's right.
Absolutely. That's it.
Thank you. And I'll agree with everything you all have said. You know, I can't say anything more other than, you know, I tell people, when people ask me about it, and I say, well, we're replacing the water main, and it makes a whole lot more sense to replace the water main and then asphalt or concrete the street, so we don't have to go in and tear up a brand-new street to put in a water main. We're doing it right. We're doing every, everything we can. Tomorrow's another day. At this point in time, I would like to entertain a motion, the that we go into a closed session pursuant to six-ten point zero-two-one, paragraph three of the revised statute of the state of Missouri for the purpose of discussing personnel.
Motion made.
Motion's been made and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilman Cook.
Yes.
Councilwoman Templeton.
Yes.
Councilman Weiner.
Yes.
Councilman Tenon.
Yes.
Councilman Dennis.
Yes.
Councilman Boyer.
Yes.
Councilman Vins.
Yes.
Motion passes. We'll take a five-minute break and then go into closed session.